All right, it is 8:30. I'd like to go ahead and call to order this meeting of the Board of Selectmen for our quarterly Department Head meetings. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for coming. So one of the things that you've seen is, as I've been sort of changing things up a bit for Department Head meetings, the objective here is to make them a little more interactive so that you guys can talk to us and we can ask more questions, and to talk more broadly about how you see your role, how you see other functions in other towns, how do you see trends that might be affecting your department, and give us a chance to react to those and ask questions. The other objective is to try to help surface more robustly your needs, things that you might require to have your department function even better than it does now, and for us to hear those and talk about them. We're here to debottleneck, provide resources, and ensure that you have what you need to be as productive as you can for the folks who put us in this building. So, as a result, we've done a couple of things. We've changed the sort of content of the reports, right? I'm more of a, someone who wants to focus on the real issues that you guys want to discuss, as opposed to just a mere listing of statistics. It's not to say that that's not important for your department reports, but trying to focus them a little bit, and again, think about how we could use that as a basis for a discussion as merely just a written report. So, I'll continue to run these experiments for a while. I'd welcome your feedback offline or in the meeting in terms of how this is working, but it really is geared not just for us, but for all of you as Department Heads. So, the next change, after kind of shortening up the reports, is to change how, the cadence of actual discussions during the quarterly meetings. And so, the last couple of meetings and ones in the past, actually before that, have run kind of long, right? So in order for us to have everything kind of covered, but have every single Department Head come in and talk, that's a lot. So what I thought I'd try to do for a few quarters is to split it up where roughly half of you present one quarter, and then the other half presents the next quarter. That way, the meeting's going to be shorter, allows us all to kind of get back to work, but also gives perhaps more time for us to have a more interactive discussion. So, what we haven't changed is, we'll definitely, everybody will continue to do a quarterly report. I expect all Department Heads to be present for this meeting, even if you're not presenting. That gives you a chance to listen to what other departments are doing and listen to the discussions. I still think that's important. But as I said, we'll try to do half the Department Heads this time, and then we'll pick up the next half at the next quarter, and you'll end up presenting twice a year. The exceptions are going to be Parks and Rec, Public Works, and Planning and Zoning, just because those three departments have got such a volume of stuff going on. We still feel it's useful to have those three Department Heads present every quarter, but everybody else is going to go back and forth. So, in addition to Parks and Rec, Public Works, and Planning and Zoning, today we'll go through Health Department, Mindy, Human Resources, Human Services, Information Technology, voter registrar, Senior Center, and TB79, and then all the other departments next time. Oh, and yes, Kathy. So, you're ready to go today?
Yes.
All right, so, that's right. She and I did speak. We're going to switch the Tax Department to, her tax collections to talk today, just because of the cycle of some of their work, it's easier for them to do that today. So we'll definitely, definitely do that today. Any questions? Okay. Also, to members of the Board of Selectmen, you guys have received all the department reports since the Department Heads are here. If you have questions for someone who's not presenting today, absolutely, they, we can have those questions asked today, but don't hesitate if you've got something that you'd like to discuss or cover. Okay. All right, so, why don't we go ahead and start, actually, with Kathy. Why don't you go ahead and give us your sense for?
Me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Oh, not me, no.
Wait a minute, you were saying?
Be careful what I answer.
Exactly.
And, so, you know, the tax cycle goes from July to June, so that's why I felt it was more important for me to be in the July and January meetings rather than SUER in April and October, but anyway. So I'm really happy and proud of our office that we actually achieved the highest collection rate ever, at 99.81 this past fiscal year. I mean, over the moon, and it speaks volumes for the staff and everything that we have working for us. We also only had to file, out of about 7,100 properties, we only had to file 23 liens, which is the lowest ever. And out of those 23 liens, six were because of elderly deferral, and four of the properties are on the market for sale, one of which already sold. That one had over $60,000 worth of back taxes. Those have been paid, excuse me, and the other one is going to be selling this week. So that's huge. I think Sarah requested at one point in time that I break out the commercial versus residential outstanding balances, which I provided, so you can see 83% of the uncollected amount is due to residential and individual taxes that were not paid. And the only other, and the other thing is that we also exceeded budget on prior year collections, interest collections, our pro eight billing, and our supplemental billings. We're all above budget. And the only other thing that I'd like to point out, and that's on the performance measures, is we continue to see an increase in the, in taxpayers using the online payment system in all taxes, SUER billings, as well as assessment payments. So that's really good. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Terrific. To what do you attribute the higher collection rate? Any particular approach or anything you've done differently?
We really work the accounts. I mean, I am getting Ina to come with me and visit businesses that owe us money. I make a ton of phone calls to people. I feel like sometimes maybe I'm being a pest, but no one has said to me I'm being too aggressive. They appreciate the reminders. People forget. So, we're just working the accounts, and sometimes, you know, I don't have anyone in bankruptcy right now. That's been an issue in previous collection cycles. Some of the people who are on deferral have opted to pay, opted to pay this most recent billing because the interest rate is higher, and they're opting to defer prior years that have a lower interest rate, so that helped. So there was a number of factors.
Okay. Have you had any calls or emails about any concerns regarding taxes due for this most recent valuation, which kicked in July 1st, or about any confusion on motor vehicle tax, given the issues they had in Hartford and the special session that followed that?
No, and the, the issues with the motor vehicle, that's going to impact our next billing cycle.
Okay.
So I don't think enough people really know about that yet. And from what I understand, and Tony can correct me because he's seen more data on this, I do believe it's going to have the impact of lowering the taxes a bit.
Okay.
It's also going to avoid, like, when we went into COVID and used vehicles, the values of those went through the roof because everyone was looking for a car, and they were hard to get, and there were issues with new cars being shipped into the US. Those market fluctuations are, are going to be, this new valuation method is going to prevent that from happening.
Okay.
So that's a good thing.
But no taxpayer concerns or complaints about?
Not any more than normal.
Okay. All right, and then lastly, for me, any trends or news or information out of Hartford, other than the motor vehicle tax that might affect your office that's of interest or a concern on your part?
I think the only other thing, and again, this, it usually all goes on the assessor's side and then flows through us, is the exemption that's going to be given to totally disabled veterans, and that takes effect grand list 24.
That's right.
Right, so our next billing cycle. And from what I understand, they will be entitled to a tax exemption on their dwelling. If they don't, not the land, just the dwelling, if they don't have a dwelling, then it would be one car.
Got it, okay. Questions for Kathy?
Kathy, what do you attribute the, the increase in online payments, and is there, I'm sure we have a, I'm sure we have a credit card charge, but do we have a charge if you're paying by check online?
Okay, so, when you say "we," do you mean the town?
Yes.
Okay, so the town is not charged for any of the fees. The taxpayer is charged a fee, but it goes through the payment vendor, and they settle with a credit card company and, you know, the exchange fees and all of that. So we don't get involved in that anymore.
Okay.
Are there fees? Yes. For an electronic check, it's $1.50. People can put multiple bills, so multiple real estate, multiple cars, all in one check, it's $1.50. For credit cards, it's two and a half percent, and for a debit card, it's a $3.050 flat fee.
So when you, it seems to be that having people pay online with a check is, is going to save you a lot of time?
Yes.
Is it pretty clear on the site where the routing number is and how to do that?
Yeah, so, the only thing that might be a little bit confusing is the system automatically defaults to credit card, and you have to look to the right of that, and there's a drop-down carrot, and then it populates the debit card and the electronic check. When you click on the electronic check option, a picture of a check shows, and it shows you where to find your ABA routing number and your account number.
And I'm guessing people are using that, not paying more by credit card?
Yes.
Right, okay, all right. So encouraging that, I think, is a great idea.
Yes.
Yep. Other questions for Kathy?
Great job on me.
Yeah, it really is tremendous. I mean, nobody likes to pay taxes, but there's no fairer metric on taxes than making sure everybody's paying what they're due, and the fact that you've gotten this kind of collection rate is a real testament to you and your team. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great, okay. All right, next up, Mindy, Health Department. Congratulations on your, approaching your first month as our Health Director. We appreciate it.
Thank you, my first quarterly report. So as you know, new to this position effective July 1st. David Knopf retired at the end of June, so we are a little understaffed. We're looking for a candidate to backfill my former position as Senior Sanitarian. Thank you to Susan for getting posted it out quickly after I started. So, some of the top five things, I'll just go through quickly. But again, the first two points, we're just talking about staffing and where we are with transitioning and the new leadership, and our seasonal responsibilities are taking up a majority of our time right now, including surveillance of vectors. And I thought that was important to call out because on my first day in this position, July 1st, I got a call from the state epidemiologist that we had our first positive mosquito for West Nile. So I put out press release, which is our standard boilerplate messaging to the public about, you know, personal precautions and, you know, eliminate standing water around your homes. But I think the important thing to note is that this positive mosquito was trapped at one of our two testing sites in town where they trap mosquitoes on June 26th. Last year, we did the same press release in mid-August. It was actually August 14th, so that's quite a bit earlier that we're starting to see positive mosquitoes. So I thought that was a good message to share. Staying on the track of vectors, over this last quarter, we actually had five Lone Star ticks that were submitted to the Ag Station in New Haven for testing. They do not, they will identify ticks, but they won't test Lone Star ticks because they are not a host for Lyme. And so that, that really is significant because they weren't found in Fairfield County. You know, over the last six years, we've started to see them moving up, along with an Asian Longhorn tick. So it's just interesting that we're starting to see those being submitted to the, to the laboratory for testing. And again, these ticks don't transmit Lyme, but they do transmit other nasty things, right? And the most significant being the Alpha Gal, which is the meat, red meat allergen that a lot of people have heard about, that, you know, some people get a reaction to red meat after they've been bitten by this tick, and it's unknown how long they maintain that allergy. So, I think that's an important message for the public. But ending on a positive note, the Connecticut Agricultural Experiment Station is now testing for two more things in deer ticks or black-legged ticks, which is the most prevalent tick in the state of Connecticut. So they've kind of expanded their testing on that particular tick, so that's good to know. And those reports come to us, and they also go to the person that submitted them. So we're kind of doing our own internal surveillance, and on the statewide spectrum, they're doing that as well. So doing our regular seasonal activities, we have recently encountered, over this last quarter, some food trucks that were not allowed to come into Darien for various reasons, and we actually partnered with the Fire Marshal's Office on one truck in particular that had a lot of problems, and they were trying to come to one of our temporary events. And, you know, I did the inspection, I kicked it to Fire Marshal's because I had some questions about their combustibles and their propane setup, and they were actually, we gave them a second chance to come in, and they still hadn't corrected some of the issues. So they were denied a temporary permit to operate in town. And then shortly after, we had another vendor trying to come into town that could not produce documentation of where they were actually cooking their food and cooling it. And they had a permit from another jurisdiction that they provided to us, but again, in asking those questions, they couldn't tell us where they were making food. So, again, they can't be making food at home, they can't be smoking and cooking food at a house smoker and bringing it into an event if it's not from a licensed commercial space. So, it's a little bit of an, an issue that we were having, and I think that we handled it well, and they just, until they are able to comply with the food code and meet our standards, they're just not going to be allowed to, to vend in town. And one thing that I thought, too, looking back at the notes over the last fiscal year, is that we had 15 new establishments, food service establishments, open in town. We anticipated a little more movement with new places coming online, but they've been very slow building out, even in Darien Commons. There's at least four in various stages of construction at this time, but we do have an inspector that's going out and, and checking periodically to see where they are and how close they are to really being ready to operate. So 15 new food service establishments in this fiscal year, three change of ownerships, and two new snack bars that were permitted at one of our private clubs. So, so any questions?
Thanks for that.
Yep.
A couple of questions. Just on the food trucks, are these trucks that come into town, are they required to display a placard or sign that says they've been inspected by the Darien Department of Health, kind of like what we see in restaurants here? In other words, if a citizen comes up and there's a food truck at some kind of event, how do they know that's okay, or at least okay from, from the town's Department of Health perspective?
Yep. So we would get involved, not in private, not if you're having something at your home and you have a pizza truck coming, for example. We're, we're not inspecting and permitting those trucks unless they've come through our office for something else. So a good message to the public would be is to vet these places, right? Make sure they, you know, have a qualified person that's going to be on site, that they have been inspected somewhere, and that they maybe, that they have a permit at another jurisdiction, because, because they could. And a part of our preliminary screening is we ask those questions. When were you last inspected? Can you produce a certified food protection manager certificate, which is that managerial oversight? And third, are you permitted in any other jurisdiction? So one of the trucks was actually from New York, and the other truck had another municipal Health Department permit, that they were inspected, but the questions, I don't know if they were asked about where exactly they're smoking and cooking food. So that was uncovered when we were inspecting.
Okay.
Sorry, are they, are they pretty standard?
Like, if they had a permit in New Canaan, it sort of matches the same criteria that we would give as a permit in Darien?
Yep, it's the same inspection.
It's the same inspection, same, okay.
It's handled differently, Health Department by Health Department, whether the police or the Fire Marshal, or what town departments may be involved in permitting the truck for an annual permit. But temporary events are different than an annual permit. So if you permit a truck year-round, it's different than if somebody comes to a festival or an event, because, you know, you can have a temporary setup from, you know, any business in town, and they may just be scaling down their operation to serve food for that two or three hour period. And that's what the definition of, is a temporary event versus an itinerant vendor, which would be a year-round truck.
So, Mindy, sticking with this, do you notify any other entity when a truck has kind of failed our standards?
Yep.
You do?
And especially the other department that issued the permit, they looked into it and called this person back to verify how food was being handled.
Okay.
And whether, you know, he disclosed that things are being reheated and cooked on the truck, but where they were being prepared beforehand. And this particular individual was cooking large amounts of proteins, you know, smoking brisket, smoking chicken and pork. And it was that volume of food raised a flag to me, where you can't do that on a truck. You don't have a smoker on your truck. So where, where is your licensed space that you're preparing that kind of food? And a lot of food trucks will do that. They'll have like a place that they're actually producing and they're holding, right, to cook or reheat the day of. So it's just following that process when you're...
Okay. A couple of other questions for me. Following up on the tick discussion, is there anything that you're advising residents to do with regard to either production of their premises or individually with regard to potential tick, tick nights?
We're, we're seeing ticks earlier, and we're seeing ticks all year, because, you know, the winters aren't as severe as they used to be. So the ticks are not going as dormant. They're out early spring. So we used to not see any reports coming back until, you know, when people start cleaning up their yards, April. Now we're seeing them in February and March. So I would say, just be cautious when you're out in any tick areas, to make sure that you're, you know, showering, throwing your clothes in a hot dryer, you know, performing tick checks on your children especially, little bodies close to the ground. And then there is a program, a free program, that the state does, that you can submit your tick, they'll identify it and test it if it warrants it. Keeping your socks up high, wearing repellent, all of those general kind of, again, placard things that we tell people to just be cautious.
Okay. A couple of other questions. One is, you mentioned in the, your kind of top five, that you're taking, or you're, quote, "I have started to implement a transformational leadership approach." Any kind of details or additional thoughts on that?
Yeah. It's really trying not to micromanage my staff, but giving them the freedom to be innovative and do their job in creative ways. So it's just a different leadership style that I'm hoping to implement here, and especially when we onboard somebody new.
Okay. And then, just in your seasonal activities about collecting and testing for bacteria in our beach water, obviously there was a spike in bacteria from some tests at Pear Tree Point Beach that caused the closure of all that. It's now since reopened and cleared. Any comments on that incident or about that testing in general?
Sure, sure. You know, that decision to close the beaches that week, you know, it was a collective decision, and I talked to colleagues in this room and town administrator, but really, the reason that was done was, you know, with public health and safety in mind, for everybody's family in our community at large. But it was just quite simply terrible timing because of the holiday falling in the week and the availability of the laboratory to turn around those tests. So we sampled on Monday, which is our normal sampling day. That test takes 24 hours. So we got the report on Tuesday. We re-sampled on Tuesday and got the results again on Wednesday, that the levels were still elevated. And then we couldn't re-sample because it was the holiday. And then we couldn't re-sample on Friday because there was no laboratory personnel that were going to be there on Saturday. So, again, as a matter of policy in our department, we would continue to re-sample until the beaches were okay and cleared to open. That's, that's just what we would do. I just think it was terrible timing with the holiday and the availability of the lab to, to get us a sample that didn't exceed, right, the standards. But also, just a little bit about that test, is the intercoxy is a bacterial indicator, and it is the federal standard for testing to evaluate public health risk in marine bodies. And it's a very basic test, but it is the standard test for all coastal communities in Connecticut. It is really the threshold for closure. And our sampling procedures have been followed, and again, we send that to the Stanford lab. It has to be read in 24 hours. It can't exceed 28 hours, this particular test, because there was a question that was posed to me about, could we have sampled Wednesday for reading on Friday? But, but you can't do that. That's an overexposure, and it wouldn't be a valid, valid test. But the root cause is really unknown, and I think that was really the question.
Okay. Questions for Mindy?
Just following up, so there wasn't an ability to determine the root cause or identify ways to potentially mitigate that from happening in the future?
Yeah. So there was, I will say, there was no evidence of a sewer line break. The most likely scenario is a non-point source contamination, and that could be from a variety of things. And the most significant, I think, and the most likely, is just a high-impact rain event. And although it's not poetic to say, is that, you know, when we get rain events like that, it almost creates like Mother Nature's mop sink, right? And everything gets flushed down and it ends up there. And it's going to take several tidal rinses for that water to clean, and you really don't know how long, because you don't know what kind of dose, what was introduced to the water. So it's really, it's, it's unknown.
Other questions?
You know, Mindy, this is for you, but it actually is for a lot of, a lot of the departments. So the reportable disease, I really like this because it's year-over-year, and I find that, I find that a little more helpful than the, you know, the tick testing month-to-month. There, you know, some kind of a comparison, like Kathy, again, awesome job, but, you know, being able to look back five years or six years, I think that's really helpful. So I'm not sure who gives you this information and if it comes in this format, but any kind of, you know, backward-looking year-over-year or last-three-year comparison, I think is helpful.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's an excellent point. One of the things that I noticed in some department reports is you do have that kind of year-over-year trend data, so we can look at it and see that. In other departments, you, you kind of don't have that. It's just a snapshot, and it's hard to tell from the snapshot, is that good or bad. We don't know. And so in a few of those, one of the things I'll do later this month or in August, is I'll go through each department report and say, for this particular chart, here's a way to redo that, so that we would actually have some trend data to notice or, or comment on, but I'll get back to everybody on that. Other questions for Mindy?
Very, very good first report.
Yep, excellent. Okay, Human Resources, Susan.
Good morning. As you can see, my first page is full of recruitment, and, and we've added one. I don't know if you heard. It's going to be a big one. So our office has been very, very busy, constantly going through a lot of recruitment and hiring. So that's what that whole first page is about. And then under the industry trends, I did put a relevant one in there, which is about recruitment. It is something SHRM, the Society for Human Resources Management, did a study in January about recruitment in general, and it's not uncommon. We're having, a lot of places are having a hard time recruiting qualified applicants. We get plenty of applicants for our jobs, but a lot of times they're not qualified. So we're trying to figure out the best way to handle that. We have a little bit of an issue with a couple of positions of holding on to people, and so we're also, you know, with the, with the dispatchers, we, we started that critical thing, which I think is going to make a big difference. We did lose a dispatcher this time, but it had nothing to do with the job. It was a personal reason that she left. And I still think that that critical test is going to make a big difference in retaining our dispatchers. But we had another position this quarter that we were recruiting for, and it's one that we're filling after having filled it a year and a half ago. And so we sort of did something different with the second interview. Rather than having the person come in for the second interview and just sit and answer more questions with a different group of people, we actually had the Department Head take her on a, on a, the two finalists on a tour of the facility, and then had more of a conversational, there was still a guideline as to what areas they were going to discuss to make sure that they covered the things we wanted them to cover, but it was much more relaxed and conversational, and hopefully trying to see a more authentic personality come out. This position is important for a particular personality to, to be in that role, and to get a more, I think, more authentic and genuine answers to some of the questions that we had. So we'll see. We've, we've got a candidate. She's in the final stages of, of pre-employment, so hopefully this will work. And then under the, the top five, the first thing in there is about the negotiations with Town Hall and dispatcher unions. An update to that is that we did go through mediation last week with the Town Hall Union, and we have come up with a tentative agreement, so we're drafting that now. So hopefully that'll be something we'll be signing off on soon, which is good. It was a good, it was a great mediation, actually. Still working with dispatchers. That's in the very, kind of still the beginning stages of those negotiations. That's really, everything else is already there. Do you guys have any questions?
So for the departures, so particularly ones who are here just a short period of time, as you put it, the difficulty in retaining relatively new employees, and so just listening to you talk about your change in approach with the final interview process to get a better sense from the person as to whether they're likely fit, are you finding anything from exit interviews or discussions with those employees that maybe shed some light about changes that we could make that would resolve beyond kind of what you're already doing?
Oh, no, I mean, the, the person that left the job that we did this with, some of the things that she said was what kind of prompted us to do it this way. It was, she thought the job was one thing, and it ended up being something else, and she really didn't, you know, I don't think, I think this is going to give people a better idea. And I don't know that we'll do this with every position. I think there are certain positions where it's not so obvious what this job entails, you know what I mean? So, no, and then I think, you know, the dispatcher thing is the only other thing that we've, we've changed so far. So I, we do do it... So I, we do do it, exit interviews with people. I mean, a lot of time, a lot of our recruitments are filling retirements and people moving on to other jobs, you know, it's, it's, it's not a lot of people that are leaving because they didn't know what the job was, but it was enough for us to decide that we wanted to see if we could do something a little different.
Okay. And then what is candidate ghosting?
Oh, we don't really, we did have that with one. Um, I forget what job, what position it was, but it's like somebody that applies for a job, you offer them an interview, they say great, and then either they don't show up or you can't get ahold of them to finalize that interview, which is what was happening. I can't, I wish I could remember. Do you remember which position? There was a position where I, oh, yeah. The person just, he would call, he called and said, you know, I, we had, he had an interview schedule, and he was like, can we change that because something's happening at home? And we're like, sure, and we changed it, I think, three times or something. And he just, and then we finally said, forget it. So it's, ghosting is just, they say they're going to come and they don't come, and we don't, we only had that one experience with it. But SHRM said that that's the third of the three big reasons that, that people are having a hard time with, with recruitment. The first two being qualified candidates, which we're definitely running into that. Um, the second is, is competition from other companies, because this is, SHRM isn't, not just a municipal, they do everything. Um, we don't, I don't know that, that that's been an issue with us for recruitment, you know, but it, ours is basically finding qualified candidates. And I think when you work in a municipality, there aren't a lot of jobs here that can be done remotely, and I think today's workforce really wants remote work, and I think that's where our big issue is. But there's not a lot we can do about that, so.
Two other questions. When you went to this conference, uh, collective bargaining training, it just reminded me just more broadly in your industry groups, are the trends that you're describing with regard to finding qualified candidates or retention, is that shared across municipalities? Do you see any kind of delta or difference between our experience and other municipalities, or are we all kind of in the same bucket?
I think we're all kind of in the same boat. It was the way it was in my old town when I left there two years ago, too. I think it's a trend that we're seeing everywhere.
It's a national problem. The, um, GFOA at the National Conference that I went to back in June had several sessions about that, and about ways you can compete, ways to streamline the process. I think the only thing that we face here is while we pay, um, pretty good wages, it's, most people couldn't live here on the wages, so they're coming in from further away, and the commute is a problem.
But the four-day work week, I think, when that was implemented, that really helped, you know, a lot, so.
Okay. And the last question for me is what, so you're nearing completion on these union contracts that you mentioned, what's the next two or three that are up for negotiation?
Police. I guess it'll be police and then Public Works, but we just did Public Works last year, so we've got a couple.
Police is up next June, and Public Works would be the June after. So they expire on June 30th, so you want to start negotiations at the beginning of the year.
Got it. Okay. All right. Questions for Susan?
Um, just, you touched on it, so SHRM addresses, uh, municipal needs and private entity.
More private than municipal, yeah.
Is, has anyone come up with any, uh, strategies to combat this situation where people seem to want remote work, which is, I would think, somewhat incompatible with, uh, a municipal, uh, employer? Are there other things that, that can be done to be more competitive?
Well, so, when I went to there, there is another group called NPLR, which is, uh, public employer relations, so that, public employer labor relations, so that's strictly municipalities. And I was at, at the conference there in April, and that was a big conversation. And I was getting quizzed a lot on the four-day work week, because I think a lot of towns are going to start doing that kind of thing, because that's, that's where we can, we can do things with flexible schedules or, um, time off, maybe ways that people can take different, not, not more, but different ways to take it, and, and stuff like that is really, because in the municipal world, right, the salaries are connected to what the taxpayers are going to pay, so we can't just like, oh, well, let's just pay people a lot more so that we get them. So, yeah, you have to be creative, and I think a lot of towns are running into the same issue. And, and like Kay said, we do have, it is nice that we are able to pay our employees what we do, because we are, you know, that is an attractive salaries for the most part for municipalities, and I think the four-day work week is great. I don't know that anybody's come up with, the remote work is hard, too, because again, it's also, um, if taxpayers come into Town Hall and half the people are working remotely, it's not a good look, right? They think they're, so, the answer, I guess, to your question is no. I don't know anything else that we can do, but it is a constant conversation.
Thank you.
Other questions for Susan? Susan, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Ally, Human Services.
Good morning. Um, one thing I wanted to note is that we unfortunately had to cancel the mental health first aid training coming up. Um, sorry, John, I know you were planning on attending, but we had, um, we didn't have enough people, and in order for it to be really productive and beneficial to everybody, you need a, a good group because it's interactive. So, um, we only had eight people signed up, although last August we had more, so I don't know, that's why we went for it again in August. But we will reschedule probably, um, end of September or beginning of October, coordinating with Joe, because once again, he's gracious enough to let us do it at Post 53. Um, so anyway, just wanted to let you know about that. Um, as you can see from my report, hoarding has been, uh, priority number one, and too bad Bobby's not up here, uh, he can share the podium with me. Um, yeah, we've had, um, two very serious, one in particular hoarding case that we've been working on, and they're very, very time-consuming. This one in particular, um, it's an elderly couple, low income, and have no family, so that makes it all the more challenging. Protective Services is involved with that one as well. We made some progress.
Don't interrupt you, but just sort of hoarding versus blight, so is hoarding really just inside the residence?
Exactly.
And blight is the, or how do you?
So blight is outside the house, right? But that, it has to be outside, nothing inside. And hoarding, it could lead to being outside, but it's primarily inside. But usually if the house is full, the outside starts to get full, um, but so, yeah.
How do you end up detecting that, right? Is this reported by neighbors, or do you, is it?
Not, occasionally neighbors, a lot of times, well, this one in particular had been, as, some of them are on the fire marshals radar, and they check, they check yearly, um, and the way they come to us, believe it or not, sometimes, not usually neighbors, occasionally it's family members. Um, sometimes it's, it's EMS going in, you know, or not just EMS, but any first responders, um, so the police might give us a heads-up, or, um, believe it or not, sometimes the oil companies have called us, like the local ones, um, and said, we went in to service something, actually quite a few of those, wouldn't you agree, Bobby? Come from their concern, like we came to service the furnace and we couldn't get to it, or something like that. Um, so it's a variety of ways that they come to us, and it's funny how they kind of ebb and flow, like we can have it, can be really quiet, and then all of a sudden, boom. Same with Protective Services or probate, and I feel like it's all happening at once. Um, so there's no way to predict it, but again, hoarding is a mental illness, um, and it's a chronic condition, so even if we make a lot of progress, then we have to keep checking up on them to make sure, and actually, one of our clients I've been working with for a while, she actually appreciate, appreciates the checkups because it helps keep her on top of things. Um, but it's very stressful for all them, obviously. It's humiliating, it's embarrassing, um, so we try to, you know, tread very lightly and, um, be sensitive.
And the main issue is that it's a fire hazard.
What's that?
The main issue is that it's a fire hazard.
And safety hazard for them, and they tend to be elderly. Um, not to say it couldn't happen, but it's more time to accumulate things.
And what's taking up the time specifically, just site visits or?
Oh, yeah. Home visits, hands-on, even the one, the larger one that we had, which the big cleanup was last, it was two weeks ago, I'm still getting daily phone calls from them, you know, they were there, they were present, it's just upsetting, because anyone who, it's not just like the TV show necessarily, but they don't want to get rid of their possessions, right? Everything has, has a meaning, or could have a meaning, or has some history to it, so it's really, really tough. It's very time-consuming, like spend hours there, hours, like.
But it's a health issue also. You often find.
Yes, like this, yes, sometimes there's rodents, and, let's just say that when we leave, I like to go home and freshen up. You know, we're inside the house, it's not in a store apartment.
So who actually goes in and helps clean out? How does that work?
So this particular one, so sometimes we have one, one of the other ones that does have family involved, um, so we're trying to get them on board. Usually the resident is really, it's really, really hard for them to even let people into their homes, um, but luckily, you know, with the fire, they have authority to go in, and then Protective Services has authority again. I don't, but so this one particular case that we've been working with has been, has been a client of ours for many, many years, the two of them. Um, I've never seen their house until, or their apartment until recently, because no one's allowed in. Um, so who actually did the work? We actually did use some ARPA funds, because they don't have any funds, um, to, um, help pay for a company to come and do the clean out. And Protective Services was there, I was there, Bobby was there, it was a long day. But it was successful, and we just have to be supportive and really empathetic to them because it's not easy.
Difficult part of your job, for sure.
Yeah, but, so that's been priority number one lately, and hopefully that dies down, because then sometimes you won't have any real severe cases. Could be, last year, I don't think we had any real severe, we didn't have any ones like the ones we've had recently. So it's unpredictable, but it's, it's, in every neighborhood, it doesn't discriminate, it's a, it's a mental health disorder, but it's a chronic one that's really, you can't ju, it's not a quick fix. It's not going to.
Well, on a happy note, congratulations on being, um, Foundation of Hope Award. That's great.
Thank you. That was the AFSP, American Foundation for Suicide Prevention, the Connecticut chapter's first to become annual, um, award ceremony, so it was nice, I felt. They did a great, they were so great to us, mercy knows, um, when we had those multiple tragic deaths a couple of years ago, um, they were a tremendous resource to us and continue to be.
Yeah. A couple of other questions for me. One is, I've had some opportunity to spend some time with the At Home Darien folks that provide senior transportation. Could you just comment on the coordination between your office and those guys and how that process works?
Oh, absolutely. I feel like they're like part of our department almost, because we work really closely with them, almost on a daily basis. They're often involved with, particularly this hoarding case that, um, this couple, they are, they don't have resources, they don't have a car, so they provide transportation, excuse me, and really kind of bend over backwards for them, but we have quite a few, um, we work with them on a daily basis, about, particularly about clients that they're concerned about. They'll refer people to us, like, okay, this family needs this help, or we're concerned about this one. They keep the eye, they see the people in the community and people that might not be on our radar, and, and refer them to us, but they are an integral part of, of the success of our department. We, we really rely on them heavily. Um, I feel like we've talked to them on almost a daily basis.
Okay. And then on the second page of your report, you list out some great programs, I mean, Home Goods Closet, the Medical Loan Closet, filling in the blanks. Um, any messages for the general public in terms of, uh, where you feel the most support's needed, or, uh, you've got too much support, or any message for?
Not too much support.
Okay, just checking.
Um, but, you know, the Home Goods Closet, so that is something that our low-income residents can come once a month, so it supplements what food stamps does not cover, so it's household items, cleaning supplies, personal hygiene items, all things that add up and are expensive. So we have clients come regularly every month. Donations are always welcome. We rely heavily on donations. There's actually a group at the depot called Helping Hands that Janice Marzano helped, um, helped create, uh, quite a few years ago, and they solely, their focus is to raise, um, funds and, and collection, and do collections for our department, so. And there's other groups that have done things like that, for two, the Boy Scouts have done things, different schools have done things, so we rely and appreciate donations as much as we can receive those.
Okay. Other questions for Ally?
Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Okay. Is information technology here today? Jeff, or George, those guys are not here today. Okay. Uh, Susan and Kara, registrar of voters.
Well, Susan did this report, so I will let her take the lead.
Okay.
Um, well, we're gearing up for a Republican primary, as you know, on August 13th, and Kara is working on that. Um, it's a Republican primary, so the Democratic registrar has not as much, um, involvement, so I thought maybe you would want to talk about it.
Sure. Um, Darien is one of the towns that will be impacted by, there's a number of races in Connecticut, they're on both the Democratic side and the Republican side that have primaries, mostly for, um, some state offices, but primarily for the congressional races, so because CT4 and the, one of the senate races on the Republican side are being primaried, we are impacted because we fall within those districts. Not every town is impacted, some towns are impacted both, on both sides of the aisle. We're just impacted on the Republican side on these two congressional races. Um, so we have early voting for seven days. We have, um, a fair number of people who are available, August is tricky, seven days is tricky. Um, so we have a good number of people who are available and willing to work early voting, um, and we have pretty much all the poll sites for primary day staff, few openings, um, but we're looking to be in good shape. Had a great meeting with HR about, we will be starting to post, um, for, um, poll worker and early voting roles, and do limited background checks depending on if it's early voting or poll worker, and sort of onboard them as temporary seasonal employees. Um, we think posting will just be another avenue for recruiting, it'll be on there. Um, we post on our, you know, on our webpage. Marley has been great about making people aware and doing social media posts and newsletter. We receive leads from Secretary of State, we have, uh, Google Form on our webpage that people can fill out, a lot of it's word of mouth. Um, so, you know, John VC, my predecessor, Susan, myself have been, you know, are always reaching out to people, uh, so are Cory and Tracy. So, you know, recruitment is sort of, uh, multi, you know, approach to reach people and get good people.
So for that, Kara, do you need to be a Darien resident to be a poll worker?
Depends on the role, but not necessarily.
Okay.
So the main thing is just, for the general public, there is a Republican primary coming up.
Yes.
State race, congressional district four, congressional primary. Uh, early voting dates are August 5th through 11th.
Yep.
The primary itself is on August 13th.
Yes.
And, uh, all of our standard polling locations except for District Four, which will be at St. John's.
Yep.
So, just to get through August, that's what everybody needs to know, and it's Republicans only.
Yes, and early voting will be, again, here in Town Hall, Room 119, from, most days will be 10 to 6, except for the August 6th and August 8th, which will be 8 to 8. I was like, 10 to 10? No, 8 to 8. Sorry. Yeah, and we're allowing half shifts. If people are interested in working, I realize, we recognize, not all towns allow half shifts. We do, um, it allows for more flexibility for people, a greater pool of available and willing people, um, so both for early voting and for, um, primary day, we do permit, um, half shifts, which everyone seems to ask for. There are very few people who want to slog through the whole day, because it is, it's a long day.
Are you guys on staffing for your August primary and actual August election day? Do you have enough folks all signed up? Do you need more? Is there something we can do to promote that?
We're probably, you know, I think we have most slots filled for primary day. There might be three or four shifts that are not, um, locked in yet, but we have people who are potentially available. It's August, so people are waiting to see if their plans, you know, they're, they're sort of formalizing their plans, or if people are coming to visit, they're kind of waiting to hear what's going on with them, and so we're waiting to hear from them. Same with early voting. We have a lot of people who've said, yes, I can do two days half shifts, or I can do this many days, but they're waiting to hear when family's coming in town, or when they have plans to finalize which of the days they can work. So we're just kind of playing like Tetris, jigsaw, like moving people around, but I think in terms of actual people.
You're in good shape.
I think we're in okay shape. November, we're, you're going to need a lot.
And the only thing that I'm worried about is that we need, we're required to have an alternate list of poll workers, and that, we had a little problem with that in the last election. Um, Kara and I had to work in the election in various roles in the last two elections, uh, because moderators canceled, and you have to be trained, a certified moderator, to be able to jump in and take over. And in this upcoming election, Kara and I are on the ballot, and, um, I've added, I And in this upcoming election, Cara and I are on the ballot, and I've added, I gave you a list of some of the newly enacted legislation, I sort of, I brought it at the last minute this morning, I apologize. I just added to what I had given you. I think it's very interesting. It makes it illegal for candidates who are on the ballot to work in the election. So in the past, we've been able to let our candidates, particularly our RTM members who often volunteer, we've, they've been able to work in a different district in our elections, but there's a new law that was passed that says that they can no longer do that. There are some exceptions, and I put it in here. We can work in the absentee ballot locations, the registrars of voters and the town clerks, but the candidates cannot. So that makes it a little tougher for us. We have to get some of this alternate list together so that we can move people in last minute, and we're working on that diligently.
Right. Just a question, and just because I want to understand logistics. When we have these tiny primaries, I mean, I don't remember what the presidential primary was, but it was like, the turnout was ridiculously low, right? And yet we have these five polling stations that we're staffing people. Is there ever the option to merge them to one space when you have these? No. Is there a legal reason why or a logistical reason why?
There is. We could, but be given the timing of August and the notice requirements of changing poll locations while we looked at and were both in favor and both wanted to consolidate poll sites for August, given the notice provisions and the notice timing, and the primary and the election have to be in the same location, you can't switch. So we were not able to, though we wanted to.
We did a big, we did a big report about, you know, moving everything around and trying to consolidate.
Consolidate.
But then, there was a law that was passed that said, or it is existing, sorry, that says that we must hold a primary in the same location that we hold our presidential elections.
We went to Sogs.
I just feel so wasteful for people's time.
We tried.
Yeah, I got it. Thank you. Let me clarify that.
I agree.
Well, we were both fully on board with it, and we tried.
Just doesn't work. Okay, thank you.
We could get...
Can I just...
Please just continue.
I think the new legislation that's been enacted, and most of this was passed as of July 1st, 2024, it's on Page Two and Three. It's, the Connecticut General Assembly has adopted some practices, some protective measures for election officials, which include town clerks and ROVs, which I think are very interesting, which never existed before. And it makes it a Class D felony to influence a voter to refrain from voting, whether by mail, or in person, or in early voting, or in same-day registration. It makes it a Class C felony to influence or attempt to influence an election worker or official while they're performing their duties by threat or harassment. Makes it a Class A misdemeanor to publicly disclose an election worker's personal identifying information with the intention to harass or intimidate. And it grants election workers a civil cause of action against a perpetrator of harassment and intimidation. I thought that was really interesting, and I think those protective measures in light of what happened in the last few election cycles is necessary because you never know what's going to happen in your municipality.
Has there ever been any history of that happening in this town?
We have had people come into, in my tenure here, come into the office and be very intimidating and harassing. We've actually had people file a C complaint about us, against us, I think, one or two in the past, and it did not come to fruition. But we have had intimidation in our office, but not during an election, to your question.
Not at a polling place, I guess, is what John's getting to.
Yes, yes, not, not, while we're in our office getting ready for elections, yes, but not on election day.
Well, be sure to report the slightest incidence of that.
Yes, we have.
It is not acceptable in any way, shape, or form, not anywhere, but particularly not in this town, and I'm just not going to stand for it. So I think I speak for all my colleagues here. So if you have any hint of that, the slightest hint, you make sure you report that, get the police involved, whatever it takes, but that's not something we should tolerate or condone in this town.
Well, I think, just to, it's sort of a nuanced issue because, right, we also have to balance people's First Amendment right, and, you know, we are public officials and people are allowed to express their frustrations and their dissatisfaction and their feelings and views on certain things. So, right, we have to balance, right, if you're yelling and screaming, you know, that may get over the line, but if, you know, we do have people occasionally who are frustrated, or they want to see something, or they have a concern of things they've read in the paper, and they want to know the random tabulators we use, or they want to know about votes being flipped, and we explain to them, I don't know how I would do that. So, right, I think we try to balance people, the public coming in and having, wanting to express their views, which they have a right to do, but they don't have a right, as Susan pointed out, if you have a cause of action, if they cross it to intimidate, try to dox us, right, our information is publicly available, so I don't know what they would do about that. But, right, I think there's a balancing act here, but yes, people get frustrated at times and they want to press themselves.
You raise a good point, and there's certainly First Amendment expression, and we would all support that, but even your language here is careful to ring fence, which is not, what's not right, which is force, threats, and harassment. I think we all know what that means.
Oh, no, we do. And people get frustrated at poll sites, I think, we're, you know, I think the emergency planning, you know, event that we went to up at Fairfield University, I thought was really great in terms of ways to, you know, practical, common sense, ways to de-escalate and, you know, mitigate the chances of heightened emotions, which may lead to, you know, people being frustrated, and then two people are yelling at each other, and one may view that as, you're trying to intimidate me to not vote. The other person was thinking, I was just frustrated and yelling. You know, neither, you know, it's both people's perception of what's going on at the time, but I think we learned some really important and common sense things, and we will be meeting with the Darien police on, you know, mitigating the, you know, queue management, on how to reduce lines, because I think a lot of that, we go a long way towards keeping frustration levels down. I think we're also going to do a heavy push to promote early voting. Boss, Susan and I are both really in favor of it and supportive of early voting. We'll be sending out postcards to every household in Darien in advance of the November election, and early voting will be in bold, larger font, because the more people, we believe, the more people we get to vote, and early voting will reduce the number of people at the poll sites and lines. Academic research and research both, you know, from the Election Center in DC and in the Secretary of State's office has shown that early voting does not increase voter participation or turnout, but what it does do is reduce those who show up in person on election day. And so, right, and so that will mitigate lines. So I think we're all going to, you know, really encourage in as many ways as we can, and we'll be working with Marley and everyone else on encouraging, getting the word out on early voting. Secretary of State Thomas is also a strong proponent of it, and it asked for additional funds for education and public outreach. She did not receive it, so that's another unfunded Mandy, you know, that's an overly used expression, but it is.
Something that we might be able to do as a town.
Yep.
Maybe we can talk about that, because I had a voter call me yesterday afternoon and say that she had no idea there was such a thing as early voting. And now, she said, I want to vote early. I'm coming early, and she, and I gave her all the information and told her where to go on the website. And so if we can get the word out to let people know that this is an alternate way of voting, I think, I think people, now, we don't have no excuse absentee voting yet in the state of Connecticut, and people don't want to have the pressure of having to vote by absentee, get it all together in the mail, or come in person. And I just want to make one other comment. In this, in this state and federal election, and in this primary in August, we have the ability to use provisional ballot voting. So if somebody, we, we, we won't have as much of a need to hopefully de-escalate a situation, because a voter will be able to vote in these two elections by provisional ballot. We do not have that luxury in a municipal election cycle, but, but they will be able to, so everyone will be able to vote. I'm not saying that that vote will count, but everyone will be able to vote.
Just, I don't want to let you go, but going back to what you said, when I hear balancing test, I would think about balancing it a little bit more heavily in terms of protecting our workers there. I think it's difficult.
It's a bit different. I'm working our own.
It's obviously difficult to get folks there. We want them to, you know, not have any addition of, you know, harassment, and I think also in the lines, if, you know, in a presidential year, it's going to be an uptick of people, you know, voting and those, you know, long lines, and I hope we have a strategy in place where we're ready to de-escalate anything that's going on in those lines. If someone's spending an hour or 45 minutes or whatever it takes, the last thing that they need is to, you know, be, you know, bothered, you know, by any place, you know, while they're, they're waiting to exercise their constitutional right.
Well, we've spread our poll sites out pretty nicely. We're going to be using the Mather Center for those primaries because of the heat, and we'll have two poll sites in the gym in November, but we have a long, a large area out here to spread out voters who are waiting, and everyone's pretty patient in this town.
We're certainly ready, and John's certainly ready. If you're finding any issues in terms of getting ready, and we don't need to know the details now, but if there's anything you need to do that you want to do, you know, don't wait, I was in this quarterly meeting, you know, buzz, you know, buzz John, and he'll do what he needs to do and get us involved to the extent we have to vote or do anything to do.
And we'll have poll presence here as well, in the, in the, in the busy poll sites.
And like I said, we'll be meeting with them ahead of time on, you know, management, and so that they know if they have to do additional training with their staff on queue management and de-escalation, because that's really going to be our goal, is mitigation and de-escalation and not having there be any incidents.
Last thing for me is I know you guys wouldn't present again for another six months if, for some reason, you need to get in front of us or get some public messaging out that we can be helpful with in the run-up to what are sure to be pretty busy election seasons, particularly in November. Let us know.
Thank you.
And I want to say one more thing. I'm thinking, I think Cara is probably as well, that we're going to have, we had close to a, nearly a 90% turnout in the last presidential election, and this is a very heated election again, and I, we're hoping for, I'm thinking we're probably going to get over 90% turnout. Primary in August, not so much, but, so it's, it's exciting.
Thank you.
Thank you, boss.
Thank you.
Okay, Beth.
I tell everybody to take a deep breath in, change the air a little bit. I just want to, my first thing will be about our program specialist, who we hope is coming on board on August 5th, and we were part of kind of a different second interview process, but I want to make a statement. The program specialist position, as I've been doing it as well myself since the Caitlin left, is a really multitasking position. It's doing the scheduling, it's doing the outreach to the community, it's, it's sitting at the desk and doing the newsletter and the constant contact, but it's also being out in public with all of the programming and services that we provide. So it, it takes somebody very special that is, has a compassion for not only what we're doing, but also likes to multitask. The person before, we had the person for nine years, then we had Stacy, who was with us for almost three years, with backgrounds with social work, which to me is very, very important. The last two recruitments, we haven't gotten anyone with that kind of background. So it's whether the skill sets that they have are going to translate over. So we believe the candidate that we did get to choose from is going to be able to do that, both in personality and profession, from the professional place that they come from too. But I have to tell you that other senior centers, because we also want to know about trends, do have more staff that specifically might just do the marketing part of it, and then be out there for somebody different for the events. I get compared to Westport a lot in terms of our programming. They have nine full-time staff, and their population isn't much bigger than ours, and of that nine full-time staff, four of them are directly related to the programming that happens on a daily basis in the center. Because you also remember that we are sort of a restaurant too, you know, we have a wood shop as well, so there's a lot of pieces that are constantly moving. I don't mind all the extra hours that went in from the time that we were left. Caitlin was here for a year and a month. I also think that there's a trend of people trying jobs on for size, especially of a certain age group, and then saying, oh, this isn't what wasn't what I was expecting it to be. So, you know, it's, it is a challenging position, and it's a very rewarding position, but it's a lot of hard work. So I just want to go on record to let you know that I know it, because I have to do both jobs together. We were able to not cancel anything that had been scheduled, and that is thanks to the part-timers who hit the ground and really helped us, and the wonderful volunteer support that we have. So I want to really underscore that. Without everybody doing extra, we would not have been able to do what we've done up to this point in time. And I'm scheduled out almost to December at this point, so I was able to continue to schedule out. September is National Senior Center Month, and it's power and connection, and we have some really great programs established for that. One I'm really proud of for our staff here, we're going to be doing a panel discussion on September 12th for emergencies, and we have our, our new Mindy is going to be coming. Allie will be there, Bobby Bush will be there, Mark McKeon will be there, and it's in my, my community and my home, safe for an emergency. It'll be extremely well-attended. And August 8th coming up, we also have our probate judge coming. He's already got about 45 people signed up for updates for probate. So we're not only doing all the fun stuff, because we're doing that as well, but we're also doing things that are really important for the community to know about, especially for our senior population. So those were, I think, my five big ones. Oh, the membership. Of the 179 non-resident members, 120 have re-upped. What we're doing right now is we're waiting till August to let, we have 60 people waiting that are non-resident members that weren't members with us before. We're still going to keep at our cap, but we're, we were giving the first people that ever did this, which was 179 non-resident members, first dibs, so at the end of July, so beginning of August, will open up for a percentage of the folks that are waiting to come into the center. It's worked out really well, and I think I've said this before, one of the other benefits is we've had more Darien residents join since we've done the non-resident membership, and it's also worked out really well with, while we have scheduled activities, for instance, on July 30th, we have the physical balancing centers of Norwalk coming in to do free 10-minute balance assessments by physical therapists that folks can actually use to go to the primary physician if they score a certain level on the test that they're going to be doing. So we figured, we filled all 20 appointments with Darien residents, so that will always have priority. I want to make sure that Darien residents know that. We'll have the balancing centers come back again, since it was so popular, and again, it's a program that's being done in the summer, so we'll re-up it again. So those are, those are my highlights. If you have any questions.
179 non-residents, how many resident members do you have?
And John, to your point about the, being able to look from year to year, the My Senior Center program that we're using now, we'll be able to put some scales in, so you'll be able to see it from that computer software to look from year to year, so we'll start doing that as well.
Do you think a lot of the non-residents were previous residents or have lived in town and they want to continue to stay?
There's certainly a percentage, and there's people that are still coming in that said, I lived here all my life.
Yep.
And I raised my children here, and I...
My friends are here now.
Yeah, so you're not, many of our non-resident members are people who know Darien very well.
Got it.
Or they still worship here, they're part of St. John's. So, yeah, I think it's, it's an extension of the community in a sense, or they were teachers, or they worked in the community, so, yeah.
Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Hey, Beth, I don't know if anybody tells you enough how many compliments we get on the Senior Center from, from the community, you know, coming to us, so I just want to say, you do a fantastic job.
It's very nice to hear, because I work with a population that tends to tell us everything that we need to improve upon. So, no, I don't have to break up any hostility, because my pure comedic nature helps with that. That's my superpower. that. That's my superpower. But thank you. It's good to hear that.
Excellent. Other questions for Beth?
Thank you for all you do.
Thanks, Beth. That's great.
Thank you.
All right. Last, but very certainly not least, Mr. Cameron in TV 79. You're killing me. No Singapore viewership statistics?
I don't know where those people have gone. They found somebody else to watch. No.
We offended them.
So I have, I have good news. First of all, industry trends, continued court cutting. People are not watching us on cable as much as they are watching us on demand through our website or on YouTube, et cetera. What that means is it's harder for them to perhaps follow what's going on with all the meetings. So innovation, we are finally at the point now that we are going to be timestamping all agendas, which means that once a meeting is over with and the meeting is posted on the website, not only does it have a link to the agenda of the meeting, but there's a list of times. So when this meeting gets posted, it will indicate exactly when Beth Paris from the Senior Center was delivering her comments in this, hopefully not as lengthy meeting as they've been in the past.
Question about that, Jim?
Yeah.
What's the, how are you doing that?
Manually. We're basically asking the videographer who's sitting in the booth up there, who has an agenda to put on that piece of paper exactly when each agenda item comes up, starting at 000 and working their way up. They then send that information to me in textual format and I include it on the website.
Is there something further that, say, a board chair could do that would facilitate that? So for example, we're going through this, these department head meetings and say, okay, now up, the health department, Mending, right? And so that they'll say, okay, well, great.
The more granular the agenda, I think the easier it might be to follow along. But people, you know, we often find that the agendas are not followed actually item by item. Things are skipped around, et cetera. So we're in the early stages of testing this out and it seems to be working fairly well. We're also going to be experimenting, Mike Wheeler, who's the chairman of the TV 79 Advisory Board, which meets tonight, by the way, is going to be testing some AI software to take transcripts of meetings that are transcribed either on a Zoom for like HHR or we can put through YouTube and run them through an AI software and see if we can get an accurate summary of a meeting. And some of the software actually offers the capability of putting in thumbnails and timestamps for particular parts of meeting as well too. So we're going to be very cautious about that because I want to make sure that the AI does, is not hallucinating, let's just say.
So Mike sent me a test summary. I think it was a Great Island Committee meeting, just to see what it would look like. I have to say, it's not bad.
Quite impressive.
It's quite, quite impressive.
Quite impressive. And all of this, of course, is designed to facilitate viewership, to make it easier for people in town to look at a blight review board and figure out what's going on with a blight review board without having to wade through, well, that's not a long one.
We're very fast there.
You guys are fast. But some of the other boards that deal with land use can go on for hours and hours. And it's kind of hard to find the one thing you're looking for without some, some guidance. Viewership remains strong. My top five, our DHS first-time intern has graduated after producing a couple of interesting programs for us. We're having a turnover in videographers because a number of the people who've been with us from NCC for a number of years are moving on to later studies at matriculating universities. So there'll be some new faces and some new trainees coming in. Congratulations to Kate for persevering and making sure that the PA project in the auditorium finally got finished. Needs a few tweaks. We're going to make it a little bit better, but it's going to be a sea change when it comes to large meetings like RTM that are going to be meeting in the auditorium. We are entering the quiet period for candidates for office in the November elections. Our guidelines say that we have a 60-day quiet period. We will not be, we will not be interviewing outside of their conduction of their normal business and work on boards and commissions. We'll not be doing any, any interviews with candidates for 60 days prior to the election. So it's not a municipal election this year, so that doesn't affect that. And we are introducing a new program called Ask the First Selectmen, where I've asked people to submit questions and they have not been shy about submitting questions. And we're working with the first selectmen. We're going to be taping our first series of answers to those questions this afternoon.
That's exciting.
Happy to answer any of your questions if you have any.
No, I just, thank you for all you do to just keep people informed. I think it's less about Ask the First Selectmen, but more about, look, if you've got a question about how government works or a particular problem or issue, I mean, we're all collectively here to help you. And we would like to get answers to, to those questions. So let's give a go and see what happens.
Good.
Any questions for Jim?
Nope, thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. That wraps up our department head meeting. So.
No, it's, you've got planning and zoning, parks and rac.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got our regulars. You're right. Not on this list. All right. So we have two more hours in our, our department head meetings. Mr. Gentile. Not on my list.
Thought I was going to get away unscathed, basically. Good morning. So the quarterly report you have in front of you, again, the top five topics, we, we adjusted one of them. I'm going to try to, as we go through quarter to quarter, put some new ones in, swap out some of the older ones, just to get you a different flavor of what we're doing on a regular basis. Don't want to bore you to tears on the same projects that go on for, you know, nine to 12 months. So. Gorham Pond Dam, of course, we did bid out the project. We did get the results back. So I'm going to give you some of the updates to what you see in front of you. The only bid that we did get was in the $2.6 million range to repair the dam. After putting a proper budget together for oversight, construction management and so on, we're going to be looking for $3.2 million of bonded funds. We did meet with Kate and Jen to go over that process. And you folks will be seeing me soon with a request for bonding for that project. Hanson Road, as you see in front of you, we were, we have established all the proper easements and obtained them. Our bid opening was July 8th. We did get a bid that was under budget for $1.2 million.
Write that down. Kate, think it up. Under budget.
You got to take the good with the bad here. So we are moving forward with that contract. We're vetting him. We do have some special concerns. There's some CHRO stuff with the equal opportunity vendors that we need to use, disadvantaged vendors and so on. So that we're working on. That's usually the tricky point with some of the contractors. So we're looking into that now. Our standard area sewer INI program continues to go. We're in the second phase of construction right now. We are about 67% complete. That project was $1.9 million. So we're vested into that pretty good. We're at the end phases. All the pipes have been lined, manholes lined. Now we're changing out the tops to waterproof tops. Quite a large project. I believe I'm putting in about 60 of them right now, changing those out in flood hazard zones. And just as an aside to that, we did have a project come through, planning and zoning and the sewer commission, that showed that we're getting results already at the Stony Brook Pump Station with a reduction in our INI. I call it substantial because we notice it now. You can see the numbers changing. But they're only going to get better as we continue to do this project. We do have a Phase 3 that we're going to start designing this, this August, September. Hopefully get that out to bid and start in December like we did the Phase 2 that we're in now. Our solid waste disposal contract. We signed a new five-year contract. It started July, July 1st of this year. The nuance to this one is now we are being charged to transport and dispose of our single stream recycling. They're charging us $75 a ton. There is an attached rebate based on the paper products. That'll go month to month. We did institute a single stream recycling fee now to our haulers. We're charging them $75 a ton to drop off at our station. I haven't heard, it's still early, but I haven't heard any feedback from our haulers. Generally, once a fee changes, it usually takes them a couple of weeks, sometimes a month to get that first bill. And then I'll start hearing some feedback on their, and some of their input, of course, good and bad. And I will come back to that as far as trends go. But let me just wrap up. The fifth topic is our annual paving program. We did put it out to bid. This is one of these municipal or governmental nuances, if you will. The low bidder that we have to take was not, in our opinion, qualified, had not done municipal roadway work with open roads to do paving. They did quite a bit, a substantial, large, large parking lot work. Some new roads, new subdivision roads, but nothing to the extent that we do where we're milling paving while the road is open. So we put the project back out to bid. We got the bids back last, last Thursday. And again, under budget right now for this one also. So we're going to kick, kick this off, I believe, the first week in August. It looks like we're going to start paving. The object, of course, is to get the paving done before school opens. We're still on target for that. And let me just touch on a trend that we're, we're seeing or you're going to see also. Our MSW numbers are up about 33% for tonnage dropped off by haulers. Our average is around 3,500 tons a year. We're up at 5,200 already, if you see in the report on page six. There's good and bad. The, the bad part is my budgetary number for hauling and maintaining our, our transfer station, I'm over budget by about $150,000 right now. But if you look at the revenue that we generated for this item, I budgeted about $450,000. We're almost at $800,000 in revenue. So we'll have money to cover the shortfall in my budget, but I didn't anticipate the 5,200 tons of MSW to come in. Now, you're going to ask why. They shut down the plant in Hartford. Wind Waste purchased the incinerator in Bridgeport. They've shortened their list to people that can bring materials there. So basically, we're the best new friends of haulers. We're, we're the place to go. We're centrally located. We're close to I-95. And a lot of our folks that come to us have accounts already. They used to go to Bridgeport. They're shortening their trip now. They also used to drop off at City Carding, just over the line in Cortland Avenue, Taylor Reed Place. Wind Waste there is filling up by lunchtime on some days. So the alternative is to come to Darien. We're still that close. So we're benefiting from that.
You have the capacity to take all that on and?
We do. As a matter of fact, we have, we're permitted for 5,000 tons of storage space and we use maybe 1,000 of it.
Wow.
So. And as you recall, a little over a year or so ago, we increased the rates for the haulers from 94 to $118 a ton.
That had no impact?
No impact. Our new contract with Wind Waste right now is 103 a ton and we're still at 118. So we're still on the positive side. And I think as Kate had mentioned way back when we made that change, we will review them every, every other year to make sure that we're still on the plus side. Any questions?
Ed, on that contract, is there any escalation, yearly inflation or anything like that?
The MSW will go up 3% every year for the five years. We set that. They had asked for four. We were two. We met in the middle. There's an initial jump for their, the running of the transfer station themselves. But in return, we're getting two new compactor trucks and a new loader up there. So the capital investment balances the increase cost to run the place.
So when you run out of, have you run out of capacity?
No, not even close.
Not even close. Okay. All right.
Sarah.
How's our compactor doing?
Our compactor has been, our compactor is, is in great shape. It's the trailers. So they're building brand-new trailers. So we should be getting one soon and the second one will close, follow close behind. They're, they're a little different. They look like the tractor trailers, but inside actually the floor moves. So when they pack the garbage in, when they get to the disposal site, they open the back doors, the floor actually moves the garbage to the end and actually pushes it out.
Hey Ed, I was thinking about the compost. So I've read like 25% of our waste is compostable. And we, we have this program, but it's kind of like flatlined when I look at it. I mean, it's a little bit of growth, but it's, you know, not what I would like to see. So what can we do about that? Here's an idea. What if we charge for these, these buckets? Maybe, can we reduce the charge? Can we promote that a little bit more?
I mean, I, I will tell you that I, in hearing from, and Carolyn Bain has spearheaded this charge from day one, and I've seen steady growth and not accelerated growth, but steady growth in it. We do charge for those, the buckets that they use because one of them is essential, right? Something you put the stuff, the other one's a carry bucket. They're pretty sturdy. It just covers the cost of it.
Okay.
The bags we recycle, they just cover the cost. We're not looking to make any money, but we're looking to help people do it the right way.
Right. What if we gave those buckets away and we lost money? We would still be making money because we would be taking that out of the MSW. So.
There is. There's a cost avoidance that you see by using, by moving it. But it's also balanced by what curbside is charging us to take it away. So right now, it's, it's basically, it's basically balancing itself to zero. Sooner, and they keep saying, sooner or later, the state's going to change. They're going to have to. And I think we're, we're ready, we're in a better position than a lot of other towns are to enforce maybe more of the food compost.
What is the cost of these buckets?
They're $25.
$25? And you can only get them at the transfer station?
You can only get them in my office down the hall.
Good. Other questions for Ed?
Yeah, thank you, Ed.
Ed, I have one. On the salt box study, I seem to remember that we have, we either have a catch basin or some pipes up there that are undersized. And you were going to look at that before that project kicked off?
Yep. And right now, the reason that they're undersized is there's a water main sitting on top of one of them. So we're looking, because of the project, it's in design phase, looking to get the water company to start. I'm going to have to run a new pipe through there anyway.
Right.
Looking then to relocate that sooner rather than later, so that I could upgrade that.
Right. We just hear about all these storms that are coming. So if we have a known problem, when we can address it.
Yep. Good. Other questions? Okay. Karen.
Thank you, Ed. You can see from my report, a few trends in the planning and zoning area. One thing you'll be seeing is demolition of the Bank of America at Seven Sedgwick. That demolition is going to get underway very, very soon. They'll start construction, which will be completed next year on an 18-unit apartment building there. You may have read that accessory dwelling units have been allowed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. That regulation change took effect June 30th. We are, we've met with a number of people who were interested, so we're likely to see that come to fruition with smattering of new units that will coordinate with folks in the assessor's office, fire marshal, things like that. The cannabis prohibition to not allow cannabis sales or growers, that took effect this past weekend. So that is now in the books. And you may have all seen or heard about the possible rezoning of the portion, the back portion of the Farnell Circle Office Park. Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing. They'll be deciding the matter next week, July 30th. And if it does pass, the next step for the applicant would be to come in with an application for the development sometime this fall, September, October. So let's lead into that. The other thing which is not noted in my report is we're going to be starting the town planned conservation and development update, updating the 2016 plan. We've put out an RFP for a consultant to assist. And over the next quarter, we'll be interviewing and selecting a consultant. So that covers the planning and zoning topics. In the building department, you'll see from their report, there's a number of large projects going on. BMW's been working on a multimillion-dollar improvement program over several years. Someone's out there quite often inspecting. Of course, the school projects, you're all aware of those. Corbin District, see the hole in the ground and that soon will be going above ground. Darien Commons, this was noted, finishing up. Heights Crossing, well underway. Heights Crossing, well underway. And Tokine Beach Club hope to issue a CO very soon on that. So many, many projects going on. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Jeremy?
Jeremy, I have one. On Thornville, what's, what's the impact on the buses that are now going to be parking there?
Certainly, uh, when the Board of Ed insourced their transportation, they talked about some short-term solutions. And it was with the full knowledge that Jerry Nielsen was trying to redevelop that property. And so if you're out there, I was just out there yesterday to see that they're parking a number of vehicles there, about less than ten. So they're aware that they're going to have to possibly move them.
Okay.
And certainly, even if, even if planning and zoning were to approve the rezoning next week, and then they were to come in with an application in the September, October time period, even with a P&amp;Z approval, let's say, the best case for the applicant would be November. They still have many tenants that need to vacate. There's some demolition and some other work that needs to go on. So nothing will be happening there until 2025 in terms of redevelopment.
My question for me is that you guys have had a lot of major decisions from cannabis to some of these major developments. What's next in sort of like, say, ninety days? Any major decisions coming up?
Well, certainly, what you'll see is one of the projects which we talked about in the newspaper is a new parking lot on Old Kings Highway, which will help relieve some of the parking strain behind some of the Old Kings Highway office buildings. It's basically to accommodate an upcoming tenant. And so that will add about twenty-five parking spaces. Planning and zoning is gonna be voting on that next week. And if you drive by, you'll see it's, the basics of that have started. Again, August is usually a quiet time for the commission, but what we'll likely see in the fall, as I said, the Thornville Circle project, accessory dwelling units, the continued public hearing for the car wash where Bertucci's is, long-range planned conservation and development. So a number of items coming through the pipeline, certainly.
Question, sort of looking ahead to 2025, when the Heights project comes online right at Hollow Tree and Heights there. It's exceptional traffic around the time that the middle school is taking their students in, and people are trying to get to that Eroton Heights train station. Is there a plan to deal with any unanticipated traffic flow impact? Because that's like the only artery really that goes from that side of town to the, to the south.
That's correct. One, one condition of their approval was some improvements to the intersection of Hollow Tree and Heights Road. So there'll be turning lanes. I think they're gonna tweak some of the timing on the lighting, Ed. I think that was part of their approval as well. So to create a second lane, if you're going westbound on Heights Road, so now there'll be the ability for someone to turn left at the same time someone's turning right, which will allow more traffic to flow in and out of there. The light adjustment, moving of a stop bar and a stop sign, so buses and trucks can make the turn a little easier. So a number of nuanced changes. Of course, the recent improvement of the light at Eroton West has made great progress for traffic flowing, I'll call it northbound, but even westbound on West Avenue. So we do encourage people, take the bus, give yourself more time, carpool, there's alternate routes.
You mean for the schools?
Yes.
Well, you don't get a bus if you're less than two miles, particularly for the high schools. So that's another issue. There's a lot of, that's a, it's a tough artery, Hollow Tree, man. It's a really tough artery. People are very nervous, I have to tell you, that area.
Certainly, what we also have to remember, what people forget, and I won't take up too much time, is the previous condition, we're, we're making things better with more new uses. So the example I like to use is when Howard Johnson's was at the corner of Ledge and Post, when Whole Foods came in, they made a number of traffic improvements. Certainly, the volume of traffic to and from Whole Foods was monumentally more than Howard Johnson's. However, traffic flows better because of the road improvements. We see that with a number of uses in town. We're trying to eliminate what used to be the back-end problem, parking problem on Heights Road. Donut Inn, you may recall, ten, fifteen years ago, people get a donut and coffee, and the first thing they do is back into Heights Road, which basically shut down Heights Road so someone could get a cup of coffee. That will be eliminated. So those types of minor tweaks that we will try to continue to make throughout town, whether it's on the Post Road or Heights Road, to make things flow better. Traffic light tweaking, which people talk about all the time.
Well, I know you make your, your, your best efforts, but I, I promise you that the, uh, the people who are dropping their children off at that middle school and the commuters who are trying to get to that train are, are not gonna have a high appreciation of the other things that are going on at that mall and other, that, those areas at other times of the day. They're going to be concerned with getting their children timely to school and getting to their trains. But I know your, your best efforts will be most likely more than enough.
It's something when we talk about, we talked about, hey, why does planning and zoning meet three hours a night, three times a week? They spend, these volunteers, they're our volunteers, no reimbursement, spend their nights sitting here trying to make sure that their constituents are able to drive through town and get to places they want to go and are not impacted. And what can we do? And they're pretty tough on the developers and builders. Hey, status quo, you have to do better. We have to make these improvements. It's the only way we're gonna approve your project. So we've seen that on the car wash. We had one hearing in the auditorium, we're gonna have another hearing. Let's make sure that if you go to that end of town, that you're not backed up to downtown. What can we do to make sure that we've turned over every rock to make sure things are okay? We do that at the car wash, and do it at Thornville Circle, do it on every project that comes through.
Other questions for Jeremy? Jeremy, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Now, finally, last but not least, Parks and Rec, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. It's interesting, my first time here. So as you all know, we came before you for funding, for some additional money to get bid documents done for the Pear Tree improvement, for the parking lot and boat ramp and some dredging. So that also went before the Board of Finance and was approved there. So we'll be moving forward with that, getting that done as quickly as we can. Some updates on some of the facilities that we have that were, that are new, that were funded through ARPA. We have our six paddle tennis court at Weed Beach is up and ready to go, so that's, um, that's complete. And we also have our playgrounds. So Cherry Lawn Playground is almost complete. We may have had a few little, I'm waiting to hear, delays with timing, but in the next week or two, we should have that open. So we're really looking forward to that. It's, it's really coming along quite nicely. The other one is Baker Park. We have a playground that we're in the planning, final stages there for that planning process. And we hope to have that before the Parks and Rec Commission for approval, probably September, October, the latest. We have seen an increase in our beach permit sales, our beach gate sales, and our summer program registration numbers up from last year. One of the things we, we're pretty sure for, at least for the gate sales, is we've had much better weather this year. In terms of last year, a lot of the weekends, especially Saturdays, where we had a lot of rain. So we think that really impacted things, so we're, we're happy to see that. One of the things that we're noticing is, I think, within the first few days of the fiscal year, we're practically through our budget for tree removal, for our trees. We've had a number of large trees that we're finding are diseased, dead, or, or damaged. We've had some, we had a large one in Tilly that kind of split in half. When you saw it, the inside, it was clearly, clearly rotten. Unfortunately, these are ones that are, are big, or they're near houses or things like that, that are outside of our capabilities, so we're having to bring people in. So you may be seeing me at some point to ask for some funding with that. And we'll have to take a look at it. Again, I think it's, staff have all said it's kind of odd that every, they're all happening kind of right now that we're seeing them and they're, they're coming. And if you've had to deal with any of it on your own property, you'll know that tree removal is quite expensive. We're having a recurring issue of algae at Tilly Pond, and we have duckweed, which is at Cherry Lawn. So those, we are on top of it. We did also discuss our course of action with the Health Department. So we're waiting actually right now on permits from Connecticut DEEP so that we can address those two issues. And then we're gonna be looking at, again, more short-term and long-term resolutions to that. My understanding is that we were treating them in the past, and we stopped, not exactly sure why. So we're gonna be looking into that and also things with the aerator at, at Cherry Lawn. The way it's, it's set up, I don't think it's working, working optimally, so that's, we're gonna be taking a look at that as well. We've had some successful events in the last quarter, so some of them, Adventure Day happened before my arrival, but was told that was a success. And I want to thank the people that helped me agonize on the decision to postpone the fireworks. It was not an easy decision, but I think in the end, it turned out for, for the better. We had a great crowd this past Friday night. It was excellent. I've heard nothing but praise for the show itself, that some people say it's the best show they've ever seen.
I say that.
The weather was optimal.
I mean, the weather was perfect. I think if we had tried to, um, hold out for the week before, we would have had a minimal crowd between the rain and the humidity and the heat. So it really turned out to be a great day, and I have to, you know, thank our fellow departments for helping make that event as great as it will be, because it's certainly not an individual effort. So, you know, the Police Department, the Fire Marshal's Department, Health Department, and the Board of Education. So without everybody working together, it went very smoothly. I was extremely happy to see, it was, um, you know, coming into it for my first time to, to see it. I was trying to visualize it with the school in the middle and, but it was really great, and I think everyone had a great time. And people don't stay, they just clear right out by ten, ten fifteen. I would say there was nobody left but vendors and us cleaning up, so. And then we just have some upcoming events. We do have some additional concerts coming up over the next month or so with the Corbin District. And we have our luau at Bede Beach on August twenty-third, so mark your calendars.
Is that a ticketed event? You have to pre-purchase tickets?
I believe so.
Okay.
Yep.
Hey Jen, Alicia mentioned for youth, um, the Highland Farm Event. And I'm not sure, I don't see it on your schedule, and Great Island is planning on an event September twenty-first. So I just want to make sure we coordinate calendars.
Yep. Yeah, we'll do that. We're still talking about how, what we want to do with the fall event and working, maybe coordinating.
Okay.
The only thing that I saw was wearing is there's a lot of forty, a thirty-eight percent increase in gate sales at the beach. Are these like out-of-town residents or people that are not purchasing beach passes? And that, that's a huge increase of people coming to our beaches, which is great, but.
Yeah. Are they coming for Great Island?
We think, we think that may be.
Do you know where the sales are happening?
We don't know. We, we, there's no way for us to track that. So we just have the, the actual sales and, you know.
You don't know if it's Bede Beach or Weed Beach?
No. So we, that was one of the things that we're also thinking of, between the weather, Great Island, and also, we did go with a new security company. So we don't know if they're being more on the ball than the previous company was or not. But, but we think that may be part of it as well.
But you can tell from the beach sales if they're non-resident or resident, just buying a day pass, right? Can you, are you able to tell that?
I don't believe so.
It's the same price?
It's, yes.
Okay. So you can't break that out?
Correct.
Then that's too bad.
Yeah, it's just a daily fee.
That would be nice if we could even just distinguish what beach it's at. I mean, if Great Island's having that much of an impact on our visitors, that's, that's good data to know.
Monica's right, just having some visibility on that, particularly if even the person selling the beach pass could just ask. So you're just here for the beach, you walk into Great Island, whatever. It would give us a better sense for where the interest is and help us with planning. Sarah?
Um, I'd love to have a conversation about what's happening with Cherry Lawn Pond, because it's in terrible shape, and I'm getting people calling. So I'd love to have a conversation about how we're gonna be addressing that and going forward.
Sure. And that, that's, that's duckweed. So that's, that's different than what we're seeing at, at Tilly. But yeah, so that's something that's also, that's part of where I was saying, I think the, between the aerator not working in, as well as it should be, because of the way it's, it's powered with the solar, it doesn't retain any power. So if it's not bright sun, it's not operating. But that's one of the things we're also looking at, waiting on a permit for that to be able to treat that pond as well.
Okay. Because you were wondering if it's, is it runoff? Is it, you know, what's causing?
Um, I think we need to get a little bit more information before I can say exactly what. We were talking about that at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting too, as to.
And was that another pond that was being treated before and is not?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, you know, again, is part of it outreach to the neighbors and how things are being handled, if that's contributing to it or not.
Well, so it's also a question of degree, because I think that one of the differences between algae and duckweed is that duckweed actually has some benefit to, uh, to water. It helps with mosquitoes, it helps keep the, actually, the below surface temperature a little cooler. So I think you need to identify how much of a problem it really is. Maybe it's a mitigation of the amount of duckweed that's growing as opposed to, you know, an eradication situation. But certainly get someone in there that knows what they're doing to come up with an idea.
Right. Exactly. So that's what we're gonna be looking at.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Now?
I have one question for Tony.
Go.
So Tony, um, I know you're not up for, for this session, but I personally have gotten a lot of questions on the car tax. So I'm wondering if you can give us, you know, the practical reasons for the change and the impact on our residents and on our, our budget.
We told the governor, the governor was interested in us making modifications to the car tax statewide up to several years ago. And the changes, as Kathy mentioned, will be applicable for October one of twenty-four, for the July of twenty-five tax bill. It's wide-ranging. It changes it from an ad valorem market value basis to using the MSRP and depreciating it comparable to what's in place in the state of Massachusetts. It should save money for the, um, the acquisition for the pricing guides, and it works in collaboration with the Department of Motor Vehicles. So it is work in progress. They did modify it with the objective of the three or four vendors to help a hundred and sixty-nine towns exercise the changes that will be. But again, it's next year, it's not for this year. So nothing's changed this year at all. It does give options to tax or not tax cars at some level and some capacity, but I'll have more detail for that. It was just a, I think, last week with the special session ironed out. We had a, a meeting last Thursday with the County Assessors Association, and the OFC's policy management still have some details to work out. So it's work in progress, and it's, it's not affecting this year's tax bills in any way or form.
Okay. Collectible cars, that's a totally different.
Those that grew over twenty years and they're antique vehicles, and they are, they are assessed at five hundred dollars, they don't get a tax bill.
Really?
Antique vehicles, yes.
So if I had like a million-dollar Lamborghini and it was.
Twenty years, twenty-five years old?
Well, Mark, let's do this.
Switching my car to a seventy-six Cadillac.
We have a cluster of those. Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm sure we're gonna continue to hear questions on this, so thank you.
Yes. More to, more to report to you the next quarter.
Okay. Other questions? Any of the departments? Friends, thank you. We appreciate the efforts to prepare the reports and do these reports, and we look forward to the next, next quarter. We'll move to adjourn this meeting and take a five-minute break.
I think I have twenty.
You have twenty minutes?
Yeah.
We will not take a five-minute break.
No, it's fine. I, my.
My concern, can we leave it out then so that we have our report, like, meeting?
Okay. TB 79, I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, July 23rd, to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a motion to go into executive session? Mic moves. Monica seconds. All in favor? Okay. And we'll be back.
We're disappointed by the postponement of the fireworks to the 19th, but as everyone has said, including a few folks who reached out to me, it was just a big success. It was a wonderful night. Everybody had a great time, and just thank you for, everybody for organizing that and coming to that. I did want to just mention, I was, on Monday, last Monday, July 15th, I was at a ribbon-cutting grand opening for Zen Cha Matcha. They do matcha tea. It's over in Darien Commons, and as we open up new businesses over there, please stop by and try them out. So really enthusiastic to see folks expressing through a vote of confidence like that, that they want to set up a business in Darien, so that's terrific. So that's all I've got to report today. I'll keep it short, and we will now go to Kate.
Well, I think you already know the biggest thing that I have to report.
Yep.
That I am retiring and taking a position in Greenwich. I'll be here through September 19th. The auditorium, as Jim Cameron mentioned earlier, the auditorium project is nearly done. We had the first meeting in there last Tuesday night, planning and zoning, some things with the mics need tweaking, so we're in the process of taking care of that. But this difference in the sound quality is tremendous.
Yeah.
And we now have a built-in feed to a built-in protector, so we don't have to have the little thing set up on the table anymore, so that's good. And the banging you heard during the meeting earlier is them installing carpeting in the auditorium. So that ought to be done, actually, today. Carpeting, down the sides and the side.
That's going to help with noise attenuation and all that.
And that's it.
Yeah, I would just say, thank you for your many, many, many years of service to this town. It's been a joy professionally to work with you. I think all of us count you as a friend, and we certainly wish you well in this next and grand adventure. And I know that the town of Greenwich is lucky to have you. Just for the public's purposes, we are going to launch immediately a search for Kate's replacement and think through that very carefully. This is the most important role in Town Hall, and it's important to get it just right, and so the Board of Selectmen is going to be fully engaged in this process, and we will do all we can to make sure that we find someone to fill these gigantic large shoes that you're leaving behind.
They're small, sevens.
They're sevens? Okay, well, shoes may be larger than shown in the rearview mirror, so anyway. But again, thank you for your service, and we'll certainly have a chance to celebrate, celebrate that at some point. Okay, Board Liaison Report, Mr. Burke.
We reviewed, met on July 10th, and we reviewed the nine properties on the list. One was released, so we are down to eight. I can tell you that the amount of fines that we have out to date on the bladed properties, the figure is $477,100. The amount of current lien, so that's where the Board votes to have a lien set, which is filed then in the clerk's office, which will pop up when those properties are sold, is $374,800. And our process there is that we wait a period of time, and then we hit a certain figure, and then we'll have a lien filed, and then the property doesn't resolve, and then, but the fines continue to accumulate, and then at another point down the road, we'll file an additional lien. And as always, when folks come in and talk to us and work with us, we're amenable to working with them on the, on those liens and on those fines. The idea is not to be a source of revenue, but rather a source of inspiration and assistance in resolving these properties. I will say we need an additional, two members. One will come from Human Services, and one will come from the RTM.
Questions for Mike? Okay, Marcy.
Nothing to report on Mental Health Task Force, other than we had the cancellation of the training, so that's kind of a bummer. Hopefully, they'll reschedule that. Monica and I did attend the Kids in Crisis Summit yesterday at Oxford Elementary. The subject was talking about the teen talk programs that they brought into our school systems. We had two Darien High School students kind of give a review on how they think it's working and what benefits they get from it. I remain in full support of this program. I think it's great. I'm super appreciative of the Board of Ed and for the Human Service Department for finding the funding to be able to continue to do that program, and I hope we can continue it in the future.
And it's being rolled out to middle, so the high schools
Yes, it's going to be rolled out to the middle six, too.
And that's this fall, or?
This fall.
Right, so we, some of the funding will be coming from, we expect, from the opioid grant. We just need to get the approvals from this board and Board of Finance and RTM. Unfortunately, they didn't mention that yesterday.
In the summit?
No. They didn't.
So when is that forthcoming?
For this board in August.
August, okay.
UOx 19th, Board of Finance, August 20th, RTM, September 23rd.
And we're not the only town doing that. I think Greenwich mentioned that they were using some of their funding.
Yeah, and Jen and I have talked about how to set it up so that in the future, I don't know that the money from the opioid settlement will continue to support this program, but that approving the budget for the appropriations from the opioid funding settlement will become part of the annual budget process.
Okay. Thank you, Marcy. Monica?
So last meeting, we went through the fund for Great Island, and a request was made to include an update on the budget. So what we're going to do going forward, it's included in this packet here, is we will include the form that Jen has been providing to the Board of Finance. I'll just make one note here that in yellow, these are movements and funds that happened from the, just so you can tell from what happened from the previous submission, so we will be getting an update monthly from Jen and Ed on that. On 23A, the road widening, the bid went out, and bids are due August 8th, I think at 3:00.
Yep.
And we're feeling a little bit more positive on a couple of the tweaks that were made as far as timing goes and as far as design of the retaining walls, so we are hopeful that we will have better participation, some participation. So that's regarding 23A, so the goal there is to start that project in this year, to finish the roadwork this year, the paving, and then any extra work, like landscaping, things like that, would be done by May of next year. So that's as far as the calendar goes there. We did have a meeting last night, our first kickoff getting started meeting with Reed Hildebrand. It was very informative. They had, I think, five people from their team. They went over the project schedule, the community outreach, and some preliminary observations, and we had a terrific discussion. The project schedule is six months for the vision process, six months for the master plan. Community outreach includes four community workshops, three experiential engagements, surveys, interactive signage, hands-on activities, art institutions, five focus groups, and a social media program. The next event, the next meeting for the, for the Great Island Advisory Committee, where Reed Hildebrand will come back and introduce the whole team, including all of the subs that they have working on him, or a large number, I should say. That meeting is August 21st. Again, we stick with the third Wednesday in the month for a variety of reasons. The meeting starts at 6:00 because we need to vacate the room by 7:30. There is scheduling constraints, and so that's why we have the meeting on the third Wednesday of every month in this room at 6:00, and we need to finish by 7:30. So I just want to make that clear, that there's not a lot of give on that. And finally, we will have the first workshop. I'm hoping that the calendar will work out for us, and we'll have the first community workshop. So this will be the first time that the community comes together to weigh in on suggestions and learn more about this. And Reed Hildebrand had, I think, a terrific idea, which is to, it's on a Saturday, and we will have one session in Town Hall, and we will have one session over on the island. And I'm targeting the stables just because space, and if it rains, it's inside, so it just kind of works out perfectly. We will have to arrange some kind of transportation for that session. So I'll be working with Kate and Linda and Karen on that. And that's it.
Okay. Any questions for Monica? Terrific, thank you. Public comments?
None.
None? Okay. New business, discuss and take action to approve settlement of litigation. Kate?
This is the tax appeal that we just briefed you on.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the settlement as proposed? Mic moves. Marcy seconds. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Transfers, discuss and take action on a request from registrar voters. We are tableying that, correct?
We're withdrawing. Yes.
Okay. Do we need to have a move?
No, we're withdrawing the item, so something different will be presented at the next meeting.
All right, terrific.
Or the August 19th, likely.
Okay, we've got a couple of sets of minutes to approve, one for a regular meeting and one for, looks like it was just executive session.
It was just an executive session.
I've read through those. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the minutes?
No, except they both say regular meeting here?
They were both regular meetings.
They were both regular meetings. There was just one was, one was executive session.
Got it, okay, but it was planned, okay.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as presented for July 1st and for May 20th? Mic moves. Excuse me. Monica seconds. All in favor? Okay. Minutes are done. And then we have appointments, so we, I would, can I get a motion to reappoint Kim Hufford as the member of the Darien Police Commission? Mic moves. Monica seconds. All in favor? Okay, terrific. All right, that's most of the agenda. Anyone have anything for agenda review? We've got our next meeting set for August 5th. I would propose that we do both of our meetings in August virtually, so that helps free up folk's schedules and makes life easier for the month of August. And next up, in terms of appointments, I'm trying to sort through EPC and sustainability. There's someone who wants to move off EPC and go to sustainability, and we'll get all that organized and set up for August and cleaned up there. So we continue to march along in terms of our appointment cleanup.
Thanks for doing that, John.
Yes, collective effort. Anything else for the good of the order? Motion to adjourn? Marcy moves. Mike second? Okay, we'll adjourn. Thank you.